Okay, so let's open the meeting. This is the September 13th, 2017 Board of Selectmen meeting. Light cam is taping. Are you recording the meeting? No one is recording the meeting. Our first order of business is just to discuss scheduling the special town meeting for November 13th, 2017. Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
All right, so Rita, you checked with the school, it's good with them, it's good with the town council?
Yes, Mark Rich will actually be attending and not Greg Corbo. And the moderator.
Oh yeah, Norm, you checked with Norm too? Excellent, all right, so that is, that is it. That is the date, I suppose we need to vote that, right?
Yes.
So I will move that we schedule a special town meeting at 7:00 PM at the Apponequit High School Auditorium on Monday, November 13th, 2017, and to open the warrant.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I also move to close the warrant on Tuesday, September 21st, 2017, at 5:00 PM.
I assumed the selectmen would want to keep it open for a week.
That's what I moved.
Okay. Sometimes you open and close it the same day if you don't want anything else on a warrant, but typically you do it a week.
When do we have to... Is transferring the free cash and paying down debt or transferring money to pay down debt, that's a warrant article, and that has to be done by September 21st, or no?
No, no.
We can do that right up to the meeting.
Well, I gave you sort of a list of some of the things I thought the board would want on that, and I'll stop working on the warrant articles.
Great. So let's just vote to close it. All those in favor?
We second it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, we can go through this list. The proposed warrant articles are the acceptance of Cedar Pond Road, et cetera, the rezoning of Staples Shore, Staples Shore Road from business to residential, there are zoning amendments for accessory structures, and some other zoning things that zoning by law review committee are doing. There's the possible ratification of union contracts, transfer unpaid FY '17 bills, transfer of free cash to pay down debt, rescind general bylaw for capital expenditures committee. What's this last one?
The town clerk and the town treasurer-
Trying to sneak this one on?
-had asked to accept this at the annual, and Lillian was just certified, so she would like this to go on the special. It was taken off the annual, remember Mitzi?
Yeah, I remember.
So I put question marks after these two. I'm not sure how you feel about, we've talked about rescinding capital expenditure committee, that it's an extra committee, but I don't know if you want to do that at this meeting.
I don't want to, we can just not utilize it.
Right, I think that's where we were-
Maybe we can just leave it the way it is.
That we appointed less than a quorum.
While we don't necessarily utilize it, future boards may want that ability. I don't, I mean, we just don't need to use it, because what-
I think there is a quorum appointed, John, just by virtue of the way the bylaw-
That's fine, and they can meet and render a decision, and we can listen to it, I mean, it's-
Okay. So businesses?
Yeah, I mean, that's my opinion, what do you guys think?
Oh, I agree. I thought we actually had appointed it so that they wouldn't have a quorum, but it doesn't make any difference. I agree with you, I don't want to rescind it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm on board with that.
All right.
The only other thing might be under our agenda item number five tonight, if we end up having that article for transfer funds for Winterfest, but that might just be transfer of free cash for everything.
Yeah, it could be on that.
Right, right.
It could be on Article One with all the transfers.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. All right, great, so that's, that's the date then, is November 13th. So good people of Cedar Pond neighborhood, please go to your town meeting, or you will be paying to plow your road for another winter. That should get them there. Our second agenda item is to discuss the school resource officer agreement extension. So we received an intermunicipal extension agreement from the regional school committee that they voted on to extend the resource officer through June 30th, 2018.
And do we have to vote on it, or we've already done all that?
You vote on the extension?
Oh, all right.
And both clocks signed under the selectmen's-
No, I know, no, there wasn't enough name, space, that's all.
Yeah, I'm in favor of this.
No changes to the last amount?
Did we review the last contract to make sure there was nothing that would, like, conflict with a date change on it? Just to make sure that there was nothing that was specific to last year, or that there was nothing that, you know, if there's an arrangement for fees, if it's not commensurate with a raise, or anything like that, I just don't, I don't have it.
I met with the police chief, we went through, last year it was just the one-page extension, but we did look-
At the contract itself, right? Because I remember seeing the whole thing, because I just want to make sure that there's nothing that would be so, you know, not in concert with just extending it for a year, something that we might not think of before-
My question was the dollar amount, the $30,500, because wages changed for the officer, but the chief said he was fine with what he was getting reimbursed.
You're not comfortable that the school committee went through that due diligence process?
Not at all, no. I would actually like to see that, and I think that's what happened last year, is we had this, I said, I think we all said no, because we wanted to review the agreement, and then we came back to it, and we said yes. And I-
I think it was two years ago, because we didn't, it was two years ago that Aaron had asked, what is different, and there were changes between the two.
Okay.
And then, but we can put this on the 27th.
Yeah, I just want to see it, and have a chance to go through it, just in case-
There was a point in time where I actually thought the same thing and cared, but I guess it's not tonight.
But you're saying, you're saying Rita, the contract did not change.
It did not change. This is the second year that we've just done this extension.
Yeah, I just want to read the contract, because maybe there was something that, I know Frank looked it over, but just from a-
Okay.
Yeah, no, that's fine, so we'll table that till our next, till our next meeting. Agenda item number four. We have a proposal to be ratified regarding our contract negotiations with the laborers' So the proposal was submitted to us for our review. Does anybody have any questions about the terms of it? I know that we've discussed this prior to tonight in executive session.
Yeah.
Put anything-
And I did ask Labor Council, should we do a memorandum of agreement like we did? And he said no, it would just be, they voted unanimously to accept this basis for proposal, and we'll just move forward, make the changes to the contract, and then have them sign it, and the selectmen can vote to sign it at a later date.
Yep.
But it suggested that you just do vote, that this is, these are the terms of the new contract.
Okay. Did you, you have any questions, John?
No, I was just a little confused, we don't need a memorandum of agreement. It's fine by me, I don't even see the purpose behind it, but, so we don't need one, that's fine by me.
Okay.
I'm fine with the, as presented.
Okay. Mitzi, did you have any?
Nothing.
Yeah? Okay, so I will move that we vote to ratify the proposal, and submit that vote to the interested parties for the sake of moving this forward.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries, it's unanimous. We received a request from the Community Development Committee for fireworks. The Community Development Committee voted at their meeting held on September 6th, 2017, to forward a letter to the Board of Selectmen requesting $5,000 for the sake of funding the 2018 Winterfest fireworks, which are scheduled for January 28th, 2018. They're asking for this appropriation, as it took three years of fundraising efforts to raise enough money for the previous display, which everybody thought was great. It was very well received by everyone that attended, so claims the letter. I enjoyed them personally. So we just touched on this regard, in regard to the town meeting. Do we want to add this as a line item for funds to be transferred to the Community Development Committee for the sake of fireworks? I mean, I know you're for it.
Yeah, well, just as additional explanatory language, too. We have about $2,000 going into this year, that's left over in the account. The intention is not that we need this every year, it's really just, we need to have kind of something to kind of-
Seed money?
Bolster, yes, maybe some seed money. If our fundraising efforts fall short, and if not, then we have this article that we kind of can keep in perpetuity for the money that we're looking for.
Do we have a backup date for bad weather?
The fireworks always have a backup date, so for the fireworks, they give us, it's either like the next date or the next weekend. So that's kind of built into the contract, that if it's poor weather, they will come down to another day.
Fine. Nope, fine by me.
Okay, so, I mean, I don't know as if we necessarily need to vote on this specifically today, but if we agree to add it to that transfer, then, then when we vote that, that'll be part of it.
Yep.
Thank you.
Here we go. Vote to approve and adopt the layouts for Cedar Pond Road, Qui Qui Can, Qui Qui Chan Circle, and Ron Circle, such a wonderful, wonderfully creative name, Ron Circle. So, here is the layout procedure. This is a public meeting for the layout of these roads. We are going to vote to decide whether we approve and adopt the layouts as shown on the Asbeld Plan, and then it will go before the town meeting for acceptance. The planning board voted on September 7th to recommend approval, subject to the completion of the items listed on the Superintendent of Streets letter, dated July 26, 2017. We decide to move, to approve the adopted layouts. Here's the following motion. All right, so we've read this stuff. Does anybody have any questions about any of this?
No, just on the punch, not on this procedure, but on Jeremy's punch list, I don't want it to go to the last second and find out it's not been done. So who's making sure that his punch list is complete? He wrote it to Brian.
And, if I may, Mr. Chair, Jeremy did meet with the planning board. He had a question under number two about the chain link fence, and the planning board voted not to put up that chain link fence, they did not feel it was required. But they have done some of the work, and the homeowners association has been in close contact with Jeremy, and as things are getting done, Jeremy goes out and inspects it.
Right. Yeah, I think, you know, to John's point, we obviously, we want to make sure that this stuff is all done, because once we take ownership, it's our responsibility to maintain it, so it should be up to the standards of our Superintendent of Streets prior to do the vote, and I think that, you know, we can, we can just talk to Jeremy prior to, and if he has issues with it, we can, we can hopefully have them resolve prior to the town meeting, but if for some reason, I don't imagine this will happen, but if for some reason they don't do anything, then we can have that conversation at town meeting with the idea of tabling, tabling it.
In the planning board's vote, they also said it was subject to the superintendent's final inspection, signing off, it was done prior to the special town meeting.
Yep.
That was their stipulation.
Okay. All right, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the layouts for Cedar Pond, Quake Shan Circle, and Ron Circle.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
The motion carries, it's unanimous. All right, so the rest of this stuff happens kind of in the background, but there's a procedure is listed.
In case you wanted to know what it was, I wrote it on there.
Interesting. Agenda item number seven is a request for a storage trailer permit at 19 South Kingman Street. So we've received the renewal for the trailer permit of Salvatore.
Cucinati.
Help me out, Rita, with this one.
Cucinati.
Cucinati. Cucinati. Um, he submitted a letter from his neighbor, I'm sorry, let me back up. Mr. Cucinati has applied for a storage trailer permit at 19 South Kingman Street. He submitted a letter from his neighbor at 17 King, South Kingman Street stating that he's okay with the current location of the trailer. Our building commissioner has been out to the site, and we received a memo from him. So the neighbor is okay with it, I'm assuming that's the neighbor most affected by the placement of it, probably based on the sightline.
The previous neighbor was not, so that's why he produced that letter.
So then, there's a drawing here of where it is, and an explanation. The current storage box appears to meet the minimum required 20-foot sideline setback, and more than adequate front setback. So he's okay with that. He does make a point, though, about the temporary nature, and is this really a temporary storage when it's been there for years? And that these do not fit into the character of a residential neighborhood, and provisions should be made by the owner to provide a more appropriate permanent storage solution. So that's kind of a conversation, I think, for another night, although I think that's something that maybe the zoning by law review committee could tackle. You know, Nate's on the front line of enforcing this type of stuff, he knows better than anybody where these issues are, and how it affects different neighborhoods, and I think he's in a unique position to provide us with insight into what would work and what wouldn't in terms of making suggestions for this. I mean, under the current by law, anyone can go out and get one of these things and put it in their yard, and if they get caught, they have to come. If they didn't pull a permit for it, they can come and get one, but there's no control over it as, at all. So I don't necessarily have an opinion on it either way at this point in time, but I think that that's part of a larger conversation that maybe we'll have and bring back to this board in the future. So with that said, I move that we approve the storage trailer permit at 19 South Kingman Street as applied for-
Tracy, how long is it good for?
A year.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye. Aye. The motion carries, it's unanimous. Agenda item number eight, review and vote. Oh wait, we're not doing this one.
Taking that one.
We're going to table this one, because there's more work to be done. Agenda item number nine. Columbia Gas is at it again. They want to open the road at 1 South Worth Street for a new gas service. Did you guys get the bond?
I received the bond on Monday, so we're all set.
All right. So this is the, um, this is a request for a gas service installation at 1 South Worth Street. There's the map, and then the letter from Jeremy Packer Highway, or I should say Superintendent of Streets, explaining the process of, or I should say the requisite requirements that he likes to see when this is done, so it looks like that this request is in order. Anybody have any questions, or?
No, other than this is a pretty big deal, because it comes across Route 79. So it's fine, but this is, this is one that needs to be most assuredly done correct.
Right.
It's not some little side street. And not that we're on the docket for doing Route 79 till 2020 plus, but as that comes down, we probably want to send a notice to all the people, if you're thinking of hooking up the gas, you better get going.
Really?
79 will, because 79 will not be disturbed.
Right, they'll be, what, five years or something before you can even consider something like that?
So I have no problems with it, just Route 79.
If I may, too, I know John Chase, before he left the water department, had asked Jeremy, everyone on 79 should be reminded, if they want to tie into city water-
Right.
-there'll be a five-year moratorium.
Both, right.
I think Jeremy might have done a mailing.
It would be something worth following.
Yeah, we'd probably do the dual mailing for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it would be good if we also know, or we have any movement on that whole project, because we have to have another public hearing, right? Maybe we could do that in advance, and then send it with that mailing, that's announcing the public hearing. I have no idea we're in the process, it could be years out.
The tricky part is, is on Johnson Drive, did you have gas?
Uh, no, but you could hook up.
Right, right. So it isn't just the people on 79, that is-
It's the first house on each street.
It's the whole coming across Route 79, going into a major development.
Right.
That if we're going to do a mailing, we'd want to do it to those side roads off of 79.
Yeah.
Okay.
To good people of the Route 79 area, if you're watching, and you want water from Taunton or Columbia Gas to provide gas service to your house, please do it now.
Mr. Chair, Jeremy does keep Columbia Gas in the loop on his roads that he's going to be paving.
Yep.
That's why all those Kenneth Welch ones came up, because they moved to get those hooked up.
Right, right. Prior, right, definitely.
We didn't vote on that, did we?
All right, yeah, so I move that we accept the application as written.
Second that.
Any further discussion?
Subject to Jeremy's- Conditions, is the word.
Conditioned, as conditioned by our Superintendent of Streets. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Any further corrections to my sloppy motioning?
Uh-uh.
Admittedly sloppy motioning. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Let's discuss the future IT needs of the town, including the idea of a new telephone system, 2019, and an update to the town website. We are building a new police station. Part of that process is to ideally move the physical housing of the IT infrastructure for the town to that facility, which is a 247 facility that is specifically designed for climate control, and with, you know, power backup and all that good stuff, for the sake of the police. Now, of course, we've talked about how we would ideally like to have all of the town's mainframe, you can call it a mainframe anymore. I'm too young to be calling it a mainframe, that wasn't really my era, but you get my point. So the IT infrastructure is here, we want to put it there. To do that, it, it really takes us, and we're in the process of, if not already, doing it, is working with an IT professional to provide the needs of that space to the architect for the police station, so that we have a room that is, that satisfies that needs in terms, not just in terms of size, but in terms of climate control, and electrical power, and conduits, and all of that, to get the, you know, the information out. It also requires TMLP to be involved for the sake of hooking up them up over there, which isn't as big a deal as we thought.
Right, it's right out on the street.
Right. So this really brings about, so that's one piece of this, is that, and I think to a certain extent, we've got the correct professional providing services to us to satisfy that need, the design of the need, the space, and all that good stuff. The next piece is the telephone system. We obviously are going to have a new telephone system for the police station, but this is really a good time to explore the idea of a new telephone system for the town hall as well. I suppose it's, to categorize it as a terrible phone system would probably be accurate, I guess, based on the reports I've heard from not just Rita, but different department heads in terms of, it's just not, not that easy for them to use it, or get it to do what they want it to do. So I guess this is just really opening up the conversation, we're not talking about this for the sake of really making any decisions tonight, but I think we just, or I want to know, in terms of planning, what your thoughts are on those issues.
So I would say, I mean, we have an IT plan, a master plan, that was put together, a strategic plan. I'm happy to kind of sit down and go through that in conjunction with John Barker, to see what we should prioritize this year. The first thing I think we need to do, though, is to really make sure that we're moving forward on the grant for permitting, because we have $40,000 that we could easily lose, and we're already in September, and there's only, you know, nine months left in this year, and I don't want to lose that. I don't, so I don't want to lose sight of that. With regard to the telephone system, you know, I'm happy to discuss that, I don't think it was in the IT plan at all.
No, I think he does have, we talked about-
Should we have him in?
I would think so.
I would think we need to have him in to say, what's, what's the next quarter's action plan?
Right, because it actually, we had an action plan in that IT, the strategic plan has quarter by quarter, and what we're supposed to be doing, so-
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we get the action plan, review it, and discuss where, what's been implemented without John?
Yeah.
Like, we, I think we, you're totally right, I mean, I bring this up, and we're talking about it, and then, of course, Mitzi, who has a much better memory than I do, points out quite embarrassingly that we've done a lot of this stuff already, and that we, we really just need to review our existing plan, and see what has been implemented, what hasn't been implemented, and then I think we can have that conversation with John to say, all right, here's where we're at, here's where we hope to be, either a good job for getting us there, or why aren't you, why haven't you done it?
Yep.
But if we don't, we don't understand what that is, this- But if we don't, we don't understand what that is, this conversation really can't happen, so...
Is the phone system in nine eleven, in the eight hundred thousand dollar, eight hundred, eight million dollar police station capital plan?
There is money allotted for that, I think in the soft cost.
I don't think for the whole town, and costs have come...
Oh no, the town, the towns, the town has to put it in their own numbers. And do we have any numbers on that?
The last company I met with, I think it was Earth Tech, the Department of Defense uses them. We're talking numbers of about a hundred thousand dollars. But then there's ways that you can lease the equipment instead, get rid of all the copper wire. But I know costs, it's probably two years since I met with them. I've met with three or four vendors over the years, but the cost was always out of sight, and, um...
Right.
So maybe now would be a good time to look at it again, I know it's, you know...
We can give them all new iPhones, a thousand dollars each, and just have them dial and direct. The website cost?
Now, we've met with Civic Plus, I'm waiting for the quote on that. And we're meeting with Virtual Town Hall on the twentieth, to get some quotes. But we definitely want a more interactive website. Have each department head, keep them up to date, get our new form, our permitting, and all of that. So, I should have a quote, hopefully for your next meeting, an idea of...
Is John Barker the, working on, was he the one to implement the permitting grant?
No, no.
It was in the strategic plan, so we need to make sure that that gets done. I think that was done between Nate and Jeremy, if I'm not mistaken.
Through People G I S.
Through People G I S.
Okay, sure.
So, it would be good to get an update on that, and I think that we should probably have regular updates on that, to make sure we're not missing any deadlines. I don't think we've done anything on it, but I could be totally wrong.
Yeah, I think he's finishing up the G I S, the mapping part.
The first part.
Yeah.
Before we get to the permitting part, okay.
How many grants do we have, Mitzi? Was it two?
Well, just that IT one, but then we have an HR grant that is for ten thousand dollars?
Twenty, and we had our first meeting yesterday, awesome.
Okay, so the IT part is forty thousand dollars.
Right, and we estimated in the strategic plan for IT, that that permitting software with all of the kinda first-year costs would be seventy-five thousand dollars. That's what I submitted for the grant application, I think I actually submitted ninety, or something like that. Something larger than what it really was, but that also included some things that I don't think were exactly necessary on that, and had multiple pieces associated with it, so...
You got forty, and I think our quote was fifty, so we voted it...
We transferred the ten at...
Ten at Capitol.
Yeah, for town meetings.
And then we have the whole strategic plan that I have given to the state March chair.
Yep.
That deadline isn't as bad, and the deadline for HR is June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Okay.
But we did get going on it yesterday, with our first meeting on...
I think that the, the IT grants, they said they were coming, or the opening for the IT grant would be coming out on those on our last meeting, it was in one of the read items.
Two meetings ago, and I gave that to Lorraine.
Okay, great, to make sure that we don't miss that, because we can talk about that too, when we talk about the IT plan, what do we wanna do secondly, after that cricket stops chirping in the hallway?
Well, I think we were gonna call Charlie Lincoln from, on the regionalization part. I think that's what monies are available right now.
Okay, so just, yeah, I think that grant's open, right?
So, maybe, as Erin had suggested, maybe the next agenda, we'll review John Barker's...
Well, I'll forward it to everybody sooner than later.
Yeah, we can just revisit it at the next meeting.
Yep.
Alright.
Okay.
There's a lot of noise going on here between... I'm not sure what's...
The crickets.
Cricket's gotta live somewhere. Town Hall's okay.
I have a lot in my house. They get in my basement.
Oh, I can't stand them, I hunt them down. And I kill them.
That's, per Sandy Horton, that is bad luck. So ever since you told me that, I can't kill them.
Okay. Let's talk about scheduling some meetings. We have meetings, September is scheduled, but we are, we have some proposed dates for the October, November, December. That's October eleventh and twenty-fifth, November eighth and twenty-nine, and December sixth and twenty...
Fall Wednesdays, intentively six-thirty, or should they move out, Mitzi?
No, just that one date, that I had that conflict.
That's fine, whatever suits your schedule.
I can't do October twenty-fifth. So, I don't know if you'd rather throw that in on, like, November first, and then we'd have November first, fifteenth, and twenty-ninth, so there'd be three in November, but they're two weeks apart each.
That would be okay, I think.
You mean November thirteenth?
November eighth would be warrant review before town meeting.
Oh, right, I forgot we have that.
When, what date are we doing the, oh Jesus, that's...
November thirteenth.
In October. Somebody killed the cricket. Wait a minute, they'll fall down the stairs, 'cause they will have bad luck. We'll hear that. Whoops. Alright, so, that's a town meeting on November thirteenth at seven PM. So, you, you were saying, sorry, I'm with you now, what's up?
Well, I just...
Maybe do November first, and we can do warrant review and skip the eighth.
Yeah, I just can't meet on the twenty-fifth of October. The eleventh is fine, all the other dates are fine.
So kill the twenty-fifth, but then when do we wanna meet? If you're gonna do warrant review on the eighth, you probably need another meeting.
I was just thinking if we did the first and the eighth, do you wanna have two?
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so November first.
End of the eighth and the twenty-ninth?
Yeah.
Six-thirty?
Yep.
Alright, December... Destroying this calendar here. Six and the twentieth?
Yep.
Alright. Alright, yeah, that works for me. We have new business.
I do. I didn't think we would have the ban in time, the bond anticipation note in time for tonight's meeting, because the bid was held yesterday, Unibank held the, I mean, our our financial advisor did the bid yesterday, and for the three-month ban that the Sloughman wanted to do, the rate for a shorter term did go up one point three percent. And because it, um...
Do you have another one, Mr. Parker?
I left one on your desk.
Thank you.
And we're matures on, matures on November, September nineteenth, you're not meeting again until the twenty-seventh, so I...
How is this different from what we already did?
It's only three months, at your last meeting, you authorized Deb Kenny to only do a three-month ban instead of a twelve-month. So this is the actual ban out.
Because add on November thirteenth town meeting, we probably wanna pay down, authorize to pay down some of these? That's why we're doing a short-term ban.
Right, right, no, I understand. Oh, so this is just to vote.
The actual note.
I see, alright, no.
This is the note.
I'm sorry, I misheard you then, I think. Okay, so, in regard to this, there's a, there's three capital items that we approved at the town meeting on June sixth, two thousand sixteen. The new pumper truck with equipment for the fire department, the new backhoe with equipment for the highway department, and the design for the new police station totaling nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's what we're trying to do here with this, so... The motion is to approve and sign the bond anticipation note ban in the amount of nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars for various purposes, to be issued on September nineteenth, and due December nineteenth, twenty seventeen, payable to Unibank for savings with an interest rate of one point three zero percent.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, it's unanimous.
And then, the other new business was, I think Tracy had talked to you about, the annual ride, Rodman Ride for Kids. It turns out that they are going to be crossing over Route forty-four in Lakeville, and on some of the town roads, you said, Tracy?
Uh, they're gonna be crossing forty-four, and then they're gonna be using, they're gonna be on a couple of the other ones, it's like Howland Street, and Marion Road.
From the police department? Frank is okay with it, and...
He doesn't know about it. I, I just got this last night, after I left for the evening, and, um... The reason that they even sent it to us was because DOT told them, you have to get a permit from Lakeville to go on forty-four. If that hadn't happened, they wouldn't have asked permission at all, 'cause they don't ask permission for the towns to use their roads.
So, we've done other Rodman Ride for Kids, though.
And, the last time they asked for permission was two thousand and eight. They have not asked for permission since then.
So, have they reached out to Frank, 'cause they're, they need a police detail, they say, on their own, you know, sheet, 'cause they're crossing Route forty-four at Kelly Tire to Richmond Street, which is ridiculous. That's like one of the dumbest things you could do.
I would assume that they have a police detail.
Other than ride the bikes backwards, which would be even more ridiculous.
That's like one of the worst intersections.
This is the one that goes on Long Point Road? So I...
It's, yeah, it's in and out of Lakeville.
Is there another one that does Long Point Road?
No, this is right onto Long Point Road.
I don't know if you're thinking of the other one, the Pan Mass Challenge, that goes through every year, and that happened just a couple weeks ago, with the water stop at Ponte Quip, and everybody's mailbox.
So this should be subject to the police?
They're gonna have a water stop at Ponte Quip.
They approve that with anyone?
Frank would need to look at this right away.
It's on the twenty-third?
Will we go approve it?
And unfortunately, the ride is on the twenty-seventh, I believe.
No, twenty-third.
The twenty-third, okay, so...
Yeah, we don't need to meet before that again.
When I talked to Amy today, I reminded her that back in two thousand and eight, we had this conversation that, you know, they needed to get us these things at least thirty days in advance. And they haven't asked permission since then, so I assume they've been doing it.
Right, so why do they care now?
Because DOT got them, because they didn't have a permit to be on Route forty-four.
Right.
I mean, they're turning on to Route seventy-nine. Off of Kingman Street, and stuff like that, I mean, they're at busy, busy, busy places.
This is true, I mean, they need signature of the local police department, fire department, board of management, and the state police.
Well, let's refer to Frank, and get his feedback on it, and Danny, too. And then, if they're for it, maybe we can try to set up a meeting where we just... Even if it's just John and I. Assuming that Frank and Danny are okay with it, well, you'd vote yes, right?
Probably, but I can, ooh, are you talking about like a meeting during the day?
Yeah, I mean, if you're not around, John and I can get together and just...
Yeah, that's fine.
Put this through. I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable proceeding without because they're the ones that know the roads and the safety elements.
Yes, exactly.
Relative to how this would impact traffic and all that good stuff, and...
Well, I did tell her I wasn't guaranteeing that this was gonna happen tonight.
Yeah. Well, if she calls, or you talk to her tomorrow, or whenever, just say that, you know, we're open to the idea of doing our best to make this work, but we're gonna make sure that we get the proper information and make the best decision. Gonna try to coordinate that with our police and fire teams to do that.
And they're really quick about these, so they'll probably give me the answer tomorrow.
Sure, sure, right. I just, I personally don't feel comfortable making the decision on it without getting their feedback, so... We will wait to, to get that, and then we will do our best to accommodate the request. Bankless job of the public servant. But okay, is there any other, any other new business?
No, I was just gonna give an update about the meeting with the community contact yesterday.
Oh, great.
So that was, um... That has started.
Did you go with Jim Kenny? That was a different meeting.
No, that was the end, right.
Okay. Where was your meeting?
They came to us. We contracted, and Lorraine.
Okay.
The... What's the... I can't remember the name where they're from. The business center that the state has contracted with. Do you remember the name? We know it.
So the update is you don't know?
I forget where they're from. The state contractors, no, they've, I gave them all of our personnel policies. They're working on a hiring policy for us, for all the different groups. They're going to... Collin Center, Ed Collins through University, UMass Boston. And actually Greg Corvo's wife, Libby Corvo, that used to work for Coleman and Page, she's a labor attorney. She was in on the meeting too, so... Probably two or three-hour meeting, so they're going to follow up on some items, look at our payroll system, we're trying to go paperless, and we'll meet in a few more weeks. Well, they're gonna develop a scope of services of just what they're gonna do for us.
Okay, great.
Thanks for you. Do we have any old business? Any other business?
Oh, on the read. Oh. Under the other items, just to make a note, that our town clerk, Williean Drain, has qualified to be designated a certified Massachusetts municipal clerk. Took a lot of, um... Several years for her to accomplish that.
Great, no, that is a great achievement. Personally, I think Williean does a great job as our town clerk. I admire her thoroughness to, to handling that job, so... Okay. Anything else? I guess we're going into executive session. That's true, right?
Yes. Not at all.
So, I move that we enter executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, specifically the fire union. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the board, and the chair so declares, and I do declare, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A seven, to comply with the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A... Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F, approval of executive session minutes for August 21, 2017, and September 6, 2017, and not to come back into open session. Second?
I'll second that, sorry.
I tried to do a ventriloquist thing, didn't work.
I just wait for John to say it.
I know, I know. I was daydreaming, nope.
All right, we have a motion and a second. By roll call, all those in favor?
Probably aye.
Aye, guys have it.